We uh we just included an executive session, now a regular session. And uh I think the issue now is to uh prove the agenda. Jump right in.
I've been saying a motion for item one point zero four. The third being June fifth, regular board mini agenda.
All in favor? Aye. You gonna oppose? Okay.
I'd like to entertain a motion for item one point zero five for the approval of the May sixteen twenty twenty three regular board meeting.
All in favor of the motion? Aye. Aye. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of item one point zero six, the approval of the May thirty first twenty twenty three special board meeting. I'll second that.
Okay, um all in favor, say aye. Aye, if you wanna post. Thank you. So we will move right into a student body report. Um Jana? It's not here.
There is an elementary video that was sent.
Oh, it's a video. Good, we have an elementary report via video.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Cooper. And we're in fifth grade.
Just just days away from being in sixth grade. We wanted to share a few fun things that have been happening at Geneseo Elementary these past few weeks every round of the school year.
May was an extremely busy month for students in the elementary building. A go blue traits we highlighted last month were excellence in leadership. The students brought in close to a hundred and forty go blue cards and got to sign the wall of fame. We learned a lot about how showcasing excellence, striving for accuracy can be difficult, but when we work together as leaders, we can aim to be the best version of ourselves. We came together to celebrate our twenty four SOM recipients and as a school, we had fun at our go blue assembly. All fifth graders had the chance to participate in the assembly this month and we got wet. We didn't get as wet as Mr. Van Epps, however, as the teachers dumped buckets of water on his head. It was a lot of fun.
Over the past few weeks, we have had a lot of concerts, including the K two chorus concert, the three five chorus concert, show choir concert, band concert, and marching band participated in the Memorial Day Parade. Tomorrow, we will wrap up the concert season with the orchestra concert at seven P M. in the auditorium. Thank you, thank you to Ms. Downs, Ms. Colzer, and Ms. Dudley for supporting us on this trip.
On Friday, we had fun celebrating Activity Day. All of the teachers took part in hosting activities for kids to participate in. There were a lot of games, crafts, water play, and scavenger hunts throughout the day. Thank you to Ms. Rose for taking the time to organize the fun. This Friday, we will have Field Day. Mrs. McBride and Mr. Mix are working on organizing a fun day for all kids, including track and field events, team games, and some fun co- and some fun competition. We can't wait for Friday.
The whale watch trip is next week. The fifth graders will head out on Wednesday morning and will travel to Boston that day. Over the course of three days, we will go to Quincy Market, the New England Aquarium, go on a duck boat tour, as well as visit the Museum of Science. Our agenda is jam packed, but we are excited for this opportunity.
Fifth graders aren't the only kids traveling. First graders going to Stony Brook this week. Third graders going to the Hidden Valley Animal Adventure Park. And fourth graders are going to Genesee Country Village Museum. Kindergartners went to the Letchworth Park Trail and the Autism Nature Trail. We are looking forward to the fourth grade pet show, as well as kindergarten graduation and the fifth grade moving up ceremony. Our final go blue celebration will also be a fun time.
Well, this brings our journey to a close, but thank you for your time each month. We are excited to see what is in store for us next. Thank you for listening and have a great day the go blue way.
Obviously, and thank you to our elementary school representatives. Okay, then we will uh right to administrative updates. So, good evening everyone, um big crowd tonight, thanks everyone for coming.
Quickly, just to summarize, uh basically where we started the year. Um last summer, we had a group of uh uh teachers, two from the elementary, two from the middle school, high school, working on our STEM and STEAM curriculum. Um that was kind of a starting point. Um they uh did a curriculum map on our ISTI standards. And I'm looking forward to the end of this month. I'm going to a national conference in Philadelphia on those ISTI standards. So hopefully we'll um get some more ideas to bring back and 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 move forward from those as well. But it was a really good starting spot for us for this school year. Um second thing, in response to a couple of the audits that happened this year, um this we did not do last year, but we are going to be pulling all devices back from all of our students um at the end of this school year. They've started trickling in. If you see the um little spots signs that uh Ms. Green made up, that's gonna going to help us get all of our devices back as well. Emails were sent out to families, but um it really is the time to pull all devices back. Um basically, we're going to reimage them, clean them, do any repairs that have to happen over the summer. Um and then we uh issue them to students probably at the end of the summer, beginning of of this school year. Um you know, as a as a fresh start for that. Um another piece that we're going to be doing this summer, we did a room by room audit last summer, but the um recommendation is to do that every single school year. So I am looking for some student helpers again uh over the summer. Um last year, I had three different student interns and that was extremely helpful going into room to do cleaning, but also in in inventory. So if anyone's looking for employment, please uh consider applying. Lastly, what we've been uh talking about is our new STEAM space. It's gonna be ready sometime late next fall. Um presentations were made in both the elementary building and the middle school, high school building. Um reached out to a couple of different area districts that had similar spaces to kind of brainstorm ideas on how they use that space. So it is something that we're really looking forward to, um you know, moving into next year. Um a piece that that did come up is bridging some of the robotics work that has been done in the elementary school. Our STEAM teacher, Ashley Burks, has done a really good job of teaching coding, but through robotics. And um we're looking to extend that out to the middle school, high school with a new program that Bosie's is looking for area schools to join in together um on drones, using small drones um and and the instructional uses of what that looks like and also mapping out a career path. It would just be a starting point, basically, to take that robotics piece and what they're doing with program programming into more of a um a racing type of atmosphere. But um last Friday, Megan Harvey in the high school took about twenty students over to uh an aviation field trip. And students could, if they went through this entire program, end up getting licensing, you know, and and I think uh um it would attract more students to that kind of technology as well. So um we're hoping that that is gonna, you know, start in small, but they're looking to have big spaces like a room like this or that STEAM lab where they could, where students could use that technology inside, but also um consider different types of careers that are available, you know, in those fields. Um couple, I think it was last month, I I took my kids to um RIT, the Imagine RIT, and just walking through the, you know, different displays of what their engineering students um presented. Um I'm picturing that on a smaller level here, like when I think about what are um obviously their mind mind students, you know, present, um having a bigger space like that where they could leave some of those ongoing projects uh, you know, that would be set up for some more extended learning um is something that we're looking for. So um we're, I'm I'm looking to grab a couple of teachers for this summer, uh plot out some of those specific units in that space. And hopefully, it's going to, you know, take STEAM from there. Um and we wouldn't really be having separate courses in those. We tried to infuse some of those skills into the existing classes that we have as a starting point until we really figure out how we're going to be using that space next year. But it's definitely something that's going to be exciting for our school districts, so we're looking forward to it. Were you able to connect with anybody at MCC? Um I have connected with uh one of the professors at MCC and um we looked at their uh optics program and it's it's extremely impressive what they have over there. So um I'm hopeful. Say that again? Alexis. Not her, it was it was one of the professors, but he he introduced, he gave me her contact information because I know they have a program, they will, you know, give you the curriculum as far as what the the base level class the students could take in high school and already get that credit going in. And um it it really is impressive, they offered to bring our students over there. So I'm hoping that's going to be um, you know, a a future trip for us, that's for sure. Any other questions? Thanks everyone.
Uh Mrs. Miller, her uh personal services, welcome aboard.
Yeah, thanks. Um so I'll start, I'll just piggyback off a little bit of what Mr. Holt mentioned in terms of curriculum. Part of um a strategic plan focus and for the district is to really um document our curriculum, so a lot of the curriculum that our teachers have are in various places. So we um set out by the end of this year to have a common template. So we've spent some time um during our professional learning days, looking at the components of a unit uh template, um sharing that and discussing that with teachers and came um agreed upon components. So um we have completed that and shared that with uh staff and they have begun signing up for some summer work. Um certainly, we don't expect that all staff's gonna complete all units and all uh courses or grade levels in one summer, but it's a starting point for us as we're trying to establish where we are with our documented curriculum. Another focus area was to have that curriculum in a repository where people can access that. Um so we've created a shared space uh where our staff is able to access curriculum, which down the line will help us be able to look at things vertically um and also provide some great resources for um our new staff. Um we've had fifty two proposals, K twelve for that curriculum work. Um so we'll look through um, you know, prioritizing that because there is a cost. Um so you'll soon see those um staff members that have been approved after we look over those as an administrative team. Um the other piece uh under an instruction and curriculum, you heard a little bit about some of the Character Strong pilot um that was happening in the elementary building in the middle school. Um that pilot, middle school has come to an end. We were able to do some collaborations with um the students that were involved in that. Um we're finishing collecting some of that information for um that group and hope to hear as they collect, collect all um the student information, survey information um and compile that, that we'll be able to see, did those lessons have uh an impact during what we know is a short period of time with a small group of students. Um but we're also planning on looking forward to how that rolls out to the rest of the staff. So um we've scheduled a training for our elementary staff to really be able to dig into um the curriculum and the lessons. So that will happen before the end of the year. Um we have some uh half days when students are released early, so our elementary staff will be able to participate in in that. Um we also have a scheduled time for our administrative team to dig into that this summer in August. And then a plan for one of our um professional development days when we return as a whole on staff uh to do some learning around um the components of that. So everyone from bus drivers to cafeteria staff, um custodial staff can participate and and be part of that. So um it is really K twelve um as we start to dig in and what those lessons look like um across the board vertically. Um couple other pieces that I've been involved in lately as we come to the end, it's certainly a celebration for our own retirements, um but it also means some hiring. So um special ed tends to be a more challenging area for hiring. Um but for both of our positions that uh have been open, both at the middle school, high school level and elementary, we've had some um great candidates and a nice candidate pool. So uh that's wonderful. Um we, I spent most of today uh interviewing for our elementary position. So hopefully, in our next board meeting, we have some candidates to um put forth to the board. So exciting about that. Um and um lastly, just some um student pieces. We did have our students from UPK from Pride and Joy that attend there, come and visit um the elementary building on May twelfth. Uh they spent a couple of hours there, um were thrilled by the playground um just because it was different. Um but you know, not that that's the the status we're looking for playground wise, but um they were excited to have a new place to run around and play. Um did a short tour and then, of course, a snack, because if you're bringing students on campus, it's always fun to have a snack. So it was great to have them here. So um you know, something we're looking at, because that was on the tails of our kindergarten screenings, really looking how maybe we can expand that for some of our other UPK students that are in other placements, how we can get them in the building and then maybe um, you know, be able to do that screening. Because we know it's challenging for our families to uh leave work or um, you know, whatever the responsibilities are for the day to bring students here. Um our NICE slot, so you hear a lot about the three three testing at the beginning of the year. I shared a little bit about NICE slot, that's our English language learners. They completed all of their testing, which includes a speaking, listening, writing um component um and in reading. And um their culminating piece, now they're they're done, is a field trip tomorrow. So I'll be attending with our English language learners and our ASL teachers um to go to the science center and then to a park and um have lunch. So um and then the last student piece, uh Craig and I have began, Mr. Gill and I have began um speaking with students a little bit to digest the panorama data. That was something that was presented here and part of our um plan is to talk to groups of students, um parents, community members about that. It was presented here. Um we're need a little more time with doing that, but we've gotten the ball rolling with um talking to some students about that data. Um kind of what do they notice from the data that we showed you about this since belonging piece? Um and digging into those questions and um, you know, what are some things that we can do to uh make our community better and um to help this school, so?
Reassure that, do you want us to?
The presentation?
Yeah.
Yeah, the panoramas. Yeah.
Stephanie, I know it's early yet, but uh what's your best guess as far as numbers for kindergarten September?
Oh geez, so I've been spending more time looking at UPK numbers. Um yeah.
And we still don't have the last week in August, so.
Yeah, yeah, and that's true. Everything is adjusting, yeah. But I know uh at the elementary level, they are looking at that, those classes. Um this week, they're starting to look at um, you know, uh groups of students for each classroom, so they're starting that process. Yeah.
Great, any other questions?
Thank you.
Indeed. And uh this will go right into the superintendent's report.
Thank you.
Mrs. Flowers.
While John is pulling that up, um we do have Brock here, just to give us a brief update on how the project is going. Um you were able to take the tour last time um and over the winter, we hadn't toured. So a lot of progress from when you had um last tour, so I don't know if it was on, nothing.
How everybody? So last time we walked, uh we poured concrete, we poured concrete inside the storage barn. So that's now ready for Aaron to start moving things back. Uh you know, once we get a little further inside progress, the insulated metal panels that we were waiting for that weren't supposed to be here until end of August, everybody was kind of worried about, showed up in May. So that's uh not something that we've normally been dealing with in this industry, right? Yeah. Well, there are good things, you get one bad thing comes too, right? So uh we're scheduled for the phase two construction. Uh we have a meeting tomorrow, walk, double check everything. Uh the school is obviously letting us get in one of the spaces early, so that definitely helps us move along. We have a schedule reconciliation schedule this Wednesday. Uh you know, schedules, schedules are fluid, right? We'll up, down, this, that, so try to figure out exactly where we are. But as of right now, we're on budget, on schedule.
Excellent. I remember that, since we we walked through and started closing.
That's the metal panels they stop at, closing the structure.
What is it? When do you think you're starting closing?
Uh probably about five weeks, I'll tell. Only because there's still a lot of in interns that still have to have.
So um it's June fifth, this this year is, it's gone, it's flown by. Um just really wanted to thank our community members and our staff who live in um the district who came out and voted and passed our budget with such a resounding positive eighty two percent results. Our transportation proposition, Huxley Path, with a one percent. Welcome Matt Melver, Don Ellis, and Bobby Steinhower to our open board positions. And again, it really does, it reflects the support that we do have from our community and they do value that we have strong um educational, academic, extracurricular programs here at Geneseo and that budget will certainly continue to support that. So thank you for our community members for that. Last Thursday, um there was an open house on Lima Road and um was there and had an opportunity to have all of our Geneseo seniors in front of the house. And um it just struck me that this was what they accomplished. You, we always talk about data in in a tangible um result of what their year is. And um certainly, it was more than our Geneseo um students. But when you look at the pictures of of this house, it is absolutely gorgeous, though they they laid those wooden floors. Um they helped build that fire place. Um the, you know, the the view of the valley, the depth. And just when when you went, if you had an opportunity to go to an open house and talk to the students about what part they contributed to, um there are boys that are in in that um group that if you ask them hi, how they're doing, you get a good fine vibe. Um if you have an opportunity to ask them what they did at that house, they talked at a level that I struggled to understand and keep up um because they they had done such a great job with their with their education. And just um, you know, it's just such an honor to see our students be able to have these opportunities and and to build a house from the ground up in in the program. So congratulations to all of our students in CTE, but this is certainly one that you really get to see what they've worked on all year long. And last week of classes is coming up quickly. We will start our local exams this Friday and they will be this Friday and next Monday. Our region's exams begin on June fourteenth. And then we know our seniors are off to the Ryden High Ranch and they'll be doing a variety of activities. Mr. Salas has talked very highly of this um senior trip in the past. And so I know students will be getting here bright and early to leave um tomorrow for the the Ryden High Ranch. Um as they mentioned, lots of the upcoming events. But the one I want to point out is the fifth grade whale watches, as the elementary group mentioned, they're back on. This is the first time that they're returning to Boston since um COVID has hit. So very excited for the fifth grade students to have that opportunity. It's a fabulous trip. Um the fifth grade team does a great job of organizing a very busy um fun filled three days. So really glad that they are getting that opportunity back. Tomorrow, we do have our orchestra concert at seven P M. Next Monday, we have our, excuse me, next, on Thursday is our G V Bosie Senior Awards Night. Um and they anticipate there's somewhere between eight and nine hundred students that will be recognized um for participating in CTE programs, and that's just the South Region. That's not the entire Bosie's, that's just the South School Districts, the eleven districts in the South. And then we will have our GCS Awards Night um on June twelfth at seven P M. We have Juneteenth off this year, June, on June nineteenth. And then the last day for school, everyone's very excited for the this day, April seventh is a half day on June twenty first, and then the last day for staff is June twenty third. So hard to believe how quickly this this year has has flown by. Any questions?
Um just to follow up on the house, I I went to see it Thursday afternoon and a couple of the students must have thought I was lost and uh gave me a personal tour of every inch of that house. It's just beautiful.
It is true.
And uh including the basement. And one of them said, look at that electrical. And it was just perfect and they say, you know, James Hyde did that. So I thought, oh, that was nice. So it was just the the kids did amazing work, amazing work, so.
Because it was a smaller house this year, smaller, still a pretty good sized house, but yeah, compared to last year's, they've got to do a lot more of the trades, yeah, goodness.
Very proud of them.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, um community relations. Um sign up to speak.
Riley Myers.
Okay, um Riley, as always, we would ask that you uh keep it to within two minutes. And um and please refrain from speaking about any particular staff member. That can be done, uh making a point with Mrs. Flowers as appropriate administrator. So those are the, those are the parameters, so with that, to welcome and uh go right ahead.
Um first, thank you everyone for taking the time to be here and letting me have the opportunity to speak. Um my name is Riley Myers and I'm a junior at Geneseo. I have made admin aware of my concerns and I'm here tonight with their approval. Um I've been keeping my grades up and perfecting my musical and athletic performances takes a lot of work. As a student athlete, involves many activities, sports, and volunteering opportunities. Stress and anxiety is oftentimes a driver. I look up to my parents, teachers and coaches as role models for my future and for help when I feel like I'm alone. But there's a specific time that serves the root of my stress. A contributing factor to what I fear the most is my false sport. I've been playing since I was three years old and I quickly found a passion for it. My varsity coach has been an intimidating individual and I learned at a young age to fear them. And as I grew older, I quickly understood why. But now, I'm sure many of our viewers are aware of the comments they have made this past month. And while these not are the, these are not the only comments, it is certainly upsetting to hear these words from a teacher and coach with the daughter. As an underweight teenage girl, I struggle with gaining weight and confidence.
Okay, thank you.
That was me, was crap in, crap out as you're eating greasy pizza. They're supposed to be commenting about nutrition and how we should take better care of our bodies by watching what we eat. But I have never had any coach telling me to watch what I was eating. And I've only been told to stay hydrated and to make sure I eat enough. This pizza was served at school and every girl in the room stopped eating. I personally struggled with my relationship with food and I know I'm not the only one in that room. I was not eating with, eating my food to begin with because I was scared of getting looks or a comment about how the Lunchable I had packed was bad for me. The fact that I didn't get my lunch out is alarming in itself, showing that I'm not comfortable in the atmosphere they create. As of last year, they have also opened weight room sessions during the week for those who are interested in strength training. I stayed at the school for thirty minutes after my two hour preseason track practice to go in this weight room. But it's not because I wanted to, it's because I felt obligated to go or else I would be less than. And I was scared I'd get less playing time if I didn't go. But why do I, why does a sixteen year old feel the need to stay at the school building for twelve hours? Why shouldn't a year round athlete be going to weight room sessions four times a week on top of their current sport? I was told by my current coach not to attend these sessions less spring and current spring, so I did what any other athlete would do and listened. We should not be questioned why we are going to these, we are not going to these extra and optional trainings because mental and physical exhaustion was real. I push myself to be the best I possibly can in time so drained. And I can't find the motivation to do what I need to because I drive so hard to please. I'm tired of not being heard and I don't want to tolerate being treated unfairly unless in others because I'm not willing to break myself for a spot on the team. Sports should be fun and exciting, but for me and other people on my team, it's super stressful and mentally exhausting. I cannot act like everything is perfect in this program because it's not. And it's very serious and very real. Coaches are supposed to be remodels and supportive of athletes. But thank you again for giving me the platform to voice my concerns.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You were very brave. Thank you and we heard you. And uh don't be afraid to follow up uh with the appropriate principal or Mrs. Flowers. Uh we take this very seriously. So thank you for coming. Again, that's very brave, thank you. Okay. Um is there anyone else? Uh Dory Farthing?
Uh I'm Dory Farthing, I'm the parent of an eighth grader and a sixth grader. And I'm, I'd like to come and encourage the board to think a little bit more about supporting the French language programs. Uh I know that there are plans and changes afoot to it. And what I would like to encourage um the district to think about is how to support those that have selected, the students that have selected French um from sixth grade on upwards and to um keep supporting that kind of learning. Um what that does is that supports the choices that students have made. Um I believe that it um, the current sort of upheaval and uncertainty that students are feeling um is causing um more stress than I would then, and perhaps that um, it's causing stress because um uh students don't believe that they feel that they're on the track to be college ready with the potential and threat to their language plans. So this is an opportunity for the district to think about creative hiring opportunity, maybe collaborative efforts. And again, efforts that can keep an in-person instruction on a language that many have chosen and would continue to choose even at the sixth grade level. Uh so I just wanted to sort of add my voice and really encourage some creative thought so it doesn't sort of dissipate or become digitally taught. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming in. Max? Some, somewhere. There he is. You're up.
Hi, I'm Maxie Rouski, father of a sixth grader, rising seventh grader. Take a moment to thank the current board between COVID, construction and all the misadventures in the gym. And I have great appreciation for all you've gone through and keeping the, keeping the ship upright. I wanted to refer back to the recent tragic event in York where a student took his own life tragically. Surprisingly, this still reverberates through his family, his community, even this part of the funeral was just this weekend. I was, our school has put such effort in recent years, not the social, emotional, well-being of the kids. There's a new curriculum in the, in the current budget that just got, that just got approved. So I was a little, I've been a little surprised that we haven't gotten an email yet. I think the parent of the middle school, just acknowledging what went on. And then when I start hearing stories that, that our own middle school students, even after that event in York, are saying things to each other directly like, well, you should just go kill yourself if that's how you feel. And knowing that our administrators are aware that this is going on. I've been surprised again that, that we haven't heard something from the school yet about this. I'm sure that there's a plan. I'm sure that this is on your radar. And I'm sure you, you've got some plan to, to address this. I'm just here to express my hope that soon you'll communicate with us, parents, kids, so that we know what to think and we know how to help support our kids through what could be a difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anthony Oliver. Board, board member-elect. Congratulations.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to take a few minutes and just urge the district to reconsider the changes to the foreign language programs that were expressed several meetings ago. I understand the, the difficult path forward of finding, you know, certified teachers. But if you don't search, you won't find anybody. So I just, I urge the district to, to conduct the search. And also I came across an article recently surveying the CEOs of the Fortune five hundred companies. And it listed the top three languages being Mandarin Chinese, French being second, and Spanish being third to be successful in business. So while it is, you know, somewhat of a misnomer that, you know, a lot of people feel that certain languages are more important than others. We've gone this far in the district without a certified Spanish teacher. I would just urge to not, not do away with the French program.
Yeah.
Well, it's about asking the board if you'd like to maybe discuss the personnel consent items prior to voting.
Would someone like to make a motion then that, can we go into executive session to discuss personnel appointments?
Yeah, so I can make that.
Okay.
Is it fair that we just move, conduct the rest of the meeting? Section eight, nine, and then come back and do number seven?
If we are going to move forward with action, we can have an executive session with the consent now. Are you thinking of having action after the executive session?
I thought you were asking to move the consent, the personnel items until after we have an executive session to discuss.
I was asking to add the executive session right now.
Oh, no.
To talk about the personnel consent items. I know. Or we could actually go to the classroom.
All right. I guess we have to talk about, we can pay the motion that the board, we want to have an executive session to discuss personnel matters. Based on the comments we just heard?
Um, just based on the personnel consent.
Okay. Okay. Who would be in favor then? Anyone opposed? Okay. Manamus?
We'll be back.
Sorry, folks. We'll, we'll be back shortly. Want to go back into regular session?
Enter.
All in favor? Thanks, everyone. We're sorry, everyone. We apologize for interrupting the meeting like that. Unfortunately, we can't talk about personnel issues in a public meeting. However, you know that we are aware of situations. There is, there is a plan in place and it will be continually monitored by the appropriate administrators. And we assure you that that will happen.
And you will be informed and kept informed. Uh, we did not have a meeting tonight, I was going until just prior to the next board meeting.
Policy, we did not meet either and probably looking at a July meeting, I would think to get going again with policy. And that brings us to personnel.
So I'm very personnel. Like then, a motion to, for consent. And then approval for item seven point zero two, the seven point one eight.
Working value though.
It's, it's seven point nine.
Questions, comments, any of those?
I just would like to, there's a retirement acceptance of retirement for Marie Casada. She's been a long, long, long time bus driver at Geneseo. It'll be weird to not see her in that loop, greeting our kids and transporting our students. So certainly want to thank her for her many years of service. And then we also have our new Spanish teacher here, Karen George is here. She asked if she could come to the board meeting. I said, absolutely, you can come. No, not obligated at all, but.
Yeah.
From one Blue Devil to another, from Attica to us, so.
Oh, welcome board. We're happy to have you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. No other questions? It's time to vote. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Manamus, thank you. And I'll go. Questions on those? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Manamus, thank you. Business office?
Business office, I'd like to get a motion for item nine point zero two, nine point zero three.
Second. Any questions on those? All in favor, say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Manamus, thank you. And that leaves us to.
Superintendent evaluation.
I'd like to add a motion to go into an executive session for evaluation of our superintendent.
And one, one.
Okay, all in favor? All right, aye. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.